Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indigentable with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
All right, Paul.
Here.
Hafstadter.
Here.
She maker.
Here.
Con.
Here.
Hafi.
Here.
And Vaughn.
Here.
Thank you. May we have motion excuse Bob from tonight's meeting? Second.
Poland.
Aye.
Hafstadter.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Do we have any visitors? Let's address council seat.
I do.
Step up the microphone, please.
So, hate to bring up a beat a dead horse, but I have a question. I guess it's gonna have to be directed at Tom because he's gonna know more about speed limits in the village. So, is it typical for a state highway that goes in the village to have a speed limit on one side of the road and a different speed limit on the other side? It's not a trick question.
I mean, I don't know where you're talking about.
Okay, well, I'll tell you. So, um, at the Wayne Savings Bank, heading south, so it's twenty-five miles per hour. It does not turn to thirty-five till you get down to the first trailer park. So, going south. When you're going up past my house, it says thirty-five all the way down, and it turns twenty-five at the church, the Lutheran church. So, can you explain to me, because you've talked about the history of the signs, how that could be? So, you can, so the going down, and I, and believe me, I got in my car with my husband to make sure I wasn't nuts. So, you have, I mean, I'm asking you, Tom.
I mean, the Troi-Panama region that we've talked about before is the business district. I don't know, I don't know why there isn't a sign there.
No, you're not listening. Why is one side of the road, one speed limit, and the other side of the road, another speed limit? And it's, and it is the truth. I want, I want you to explain that to me. I just, I went, I thought I was nuts. So, Bob Hines was correct, hate to say, about the speed signs being wrong in this village. So, I, I encourage all of you, at the Wayne Savings Bank, it says, when you're, it says, so I'm trying to think. I pulled it out. So, you've got twenty-five, and it doesn't, on this side of the road, so heading south.
Twenty-five, southbound or northbound?
South.
South.
It says twenty, or the sign says twenty-five, all the way, so twenty-five to the first trailer park, then it says thirty-five. One side of the road, on any street. On the other side of the road, it's thirty-five and it turns twenty-five. So, if you could, so, my question is, people go down past my house, and I guess I'm making it about me tonight, but it's about all of us that live there, very fast coming down in front of my house, to where there's screeching tires going, that is twenty-five. The other side is thirty-five. Can you explain to me how that could have happened?
Well, I think we've talked about the only area that's twenty-five is the business district. Is that not what we've discussed?
Right. The, the one thing that has come out, well, if I, Andrea.
Is it one side of the road or the other?
Well, the, the one thing that we have realized after this, going over this the past couple of months, is our sign is messed up. Where were that? Because we found the same situation on Massa Road. Ideally.
But are we gonna wait for a study? Because right now, people go more than twenty-five down past my house. Is it, is it excusable because the other side of the road is thirty-five? How's that work? My question, you see where I'm going with this? Please, please tell me if you see where I'm going with this.
But it's planned, as I understand.
Yeah, I, I understand. I mean, you're going north, it's thirty-five. You're going south, it's twenty-five.
How can that be?
I think, correct me if I'm all wrong here, guys, but ba- basically, the twenty-five should stop around the Lutheran church, because that's basically where the business district ends, which would be around Hobart's Inches.
On one side of the road.
Right. Well, I think what, I think there's just signs missing that the state never, never put in. But that's one thing.
But do we go by signs or not? Do we not go by, well, say it's missing, or Google says this, or somebody put, you, you, do you see my, based on the sign?
Yes.
It's twenty-five miles per hour going down south past my house.
I understand what you're saying. I really do. I get it. It's twenty-five one side.
And I think they should only go twenty-five.
And thirty-five on the other. I, I understand.
That's nuts.
Right, and that's.
And it shouldn't be after a study gets done. That needs to be, if it's twenty-five on one side and it's thirty-five on another, those sign, that speed limit should be enforced. Am I, do I, am I, am I missing something here that that's not correct? That we're just gonna go by signs or wrong? A speed, a sign's a sign. Am I deer and headlights here, or does that, and Bob said you?
No.
I mean, do you see my pronunciations?
Yes, we, yeah, I do. I understand that. I mean.
That, that's one of the things we've, when we, when this whole thing came up, I've got a map I'm trying to find of where all the speed zones start and stop. And when I, when we plotted that all out, and I had police department double check me and actually triple check me on that as well, it, it is.
I thought I was nuts. I, I thought, I, I didn't notice it until tonight, because literally, there was a police car that had the, like, and I'm like, oh, is that twenty-five there or thirty-five? But like, I mean, I've lived here for twenty-four years, but I'm all messed up now.
Two forty-one.
And definitely, I got the car three times. It's, it's two different speed limits on the same road, on opposite sides of the road.
Yep, two forty-one's the same way. And I don't know why. I honestly don't know why.
Well, I thought Tom liked it, I like it.
East, East Jackson was the same way, if I remember right. We, we think there was a sign near Dean Engels' former home. It's not there. There's no sign there.
So, do, what, what, so do speed limits only get enforced if we think the signs are right, or, and I'm not criticizing, but I do know people go way past, past my house.
So, we've been working with ODOT pretty heavily the last, what, two months.
So, this isn't gonna like take a year?
Oh, no, I don't believe so. We've also got Carpenter Marty. They were supposed to have been in a couple of weeks ago to do their traffic counts on the portion you're talking about from like Adams Street.
So, you need that too, that it's twenty-five going down past my house and it's thirty-five going up?
Down to like Monroe Street Extension, I believe, is where we talked about. So, it, it's definitely in the works. We're definitely, we're aware that it is screwed up. But we wanna make sure we get it right moving forward, all of it.
You know, I.
Is it right now? How, I, I, that's where the confusion comes in for me.
Well, if there's no sign, I don't know. I, I don't know what the.
Well, there's signs. It start, I mean, it's, it says twenty-five at Wayne, and then it doesn't say thirty-five until you get down to the first trailer park. So, that means it's twenty-five in front of my house, going down. Am I wrong?
No.
And, and, but it's thirty-five, and I'll tell you what I think happened, definitely both think that, is even though we're planning something this or the other, the semis couldn't get up the road in front of my house. So, some knee jerk, something happened where they had to make it be thirty-five, and, and I'm, I'm thinking in the years when I would go talk to Tom about the semi stalling out there or whatever was going on, if I couldn't get out of my driveway. So, whatever ODOT did, it just is nuts to me, that you have a road, that I've known that you've got a speed limit on one side and a speed limit on the other side. So, technically, a person could get a speeding ticket on one side of the road and not a speeding ticket on the other side of the road. Or we just say, if we want, we just decide what speed limit we're gonna pick and ask them what it is, thirty-five going down.
No, I think we're trying to correct it and move forward. I think we're all acknowledging that it's not right the way it is now, and we're trying to correct that.
You know, Andrea, I think years ago, there was a thirty-five mile an hour sign at the Y. I don't know. If anybody can attest that there was, or wasn't?
There we go again. I just wanna make sure. I, I mean, but to me, my point is, really, people should not be going down twenty-five. And if, if it is twenty-five, then that is fast to be going. And I hear screech. I hear the semi screech. I've seen the wrecks that happen there when somebody's trying to shoot across Washington Street. That's all I'm saying. And I mean, we're doing a study. We're doing a study. Okay, in the meantime, people are speeding down past my house.
Well, do you want us to get it right or have a neat, another knee jerk reaction and just wing it?
Is it, but is it twenty-five in front of my house going south?
We don't know. We're, that's what we're trying to figure out.
But the signs say twenty-five.
Well, okay, as of right now, then I would say probably yes.
Okay. I'm not trying to do it.
No, I know, but I, do you see where I'm coming from? We wanna, we wanna try to fix this and get it right, so we don't have to keep hashing this out every, however often.
Any other visitors? Do you have motion to spend the reading in minutes? Second.
Poland.
Aye.
Hafstadter.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Aye. Any additions or corrections?
There's a correction. Um, the village solicitor contract renewal, it's H-I-N-E-S, not hind, like Hinden.
Yes.
I just, it's, I actually did that twice in the notes. Karen caught one, and then I just missed that one.
It was in there, I don't know, three times.
Which section was that in?
Um, page three.
Ah, there it is. Okay, I got it. I'll get that corrected.
Any other additions, corrections? Do you have motion to pass?
So move.
I'll second.
Hafi.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hafstadter.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill Roses, two thousand twenty-three days, thirty-five. Uh, you guys, late this afternoon, we get, we got a revised bill total. Uh, new total's three hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-six cents. Are there any additions or any questions on the bills?
The, the stop payment, was there a problem or a wrong amount, or?
Somebody lost their check. We sent them an income tax refund check earlier in the year.
And they lost it.
Hadn't been cashed, so we followed up and.
Okay, okay. I just wondered about that.
Do you have motion to pay the bills?
I'll make the motion to pay.
Second, Con.
She maker.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hafstadter.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Hi, thank you. Chief.
Just had a couple of things for upcoming events. Um, I got called from, uh, phone call from Judy from HDN this morning. I mean, they're playing into a Halloween parade Thursday night at twenty-six at seven P M. So, between six and seven, probably six, six-thirty, we'll shut down. And then seven o'clock's when the parade will step off, it'll come down Jackson, two main anthony, and we move back around on Jackson, go back up to the courthouse. So, during that time, traffic will be shut down, so we can have the kids walking safety. Um, and then on Friday afternoon, also another traffic advisory around two o'clock. Uh, the elementary school kids will come down and do their fall har- harvest parade, uh, which is like their trick or treat, their downtown businesses. So, during that time, while people at the intersections happen, the kids cross. Uh, we don't shut down traffic other than letting classes get crossed. So, other than that, I don't have anything.
I've got something for you. December the tenth, the American Legion and Senior Point Nursing Hall is bringing Santa Claus to town. It's a Sunday, and the parade will form at Millersburg Elementary, and we'll need an escort.
What time did you say?
Two, yeah.
And where's it going from the elementary to where?
Legion.
Is it just one unit, or just one unit coming down?
No, they'll be shut off.
Wow, okay.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Nate?
All right. Designer Board will meet first to review a certificate of appropriateness application for the Eagles, uh, for a covered deck and cooler addition at the rear of their building at one forty-three West Jackson. Planning and zoning is also gonna meet, we have another change of zoning application for a triplex in an R-three district, so they're requesting to change that to the special use district at one seventy-seven Saint Clair Street. Uh, the, the design review ordinances and guideline revisions, I believe, are finally done now. There was, last week was a flurry of paint samples coming in and out. So, got that nailed down, I believe. I'll get those sent out this week to you guys, and then also get it posted on the website for review. Our storm sewer project, the gas company's working onsite to relocate the, the gas lines that are conflicting with where the storm sewer has to go. Uh, they did patch the trail crossing and the, the crossing of Grant Street today. The asphalt has been repaired there. Uh, actually, they were still working on it when I came in, so hopefully they're done by now. Um, hoping the gas company gets moving, gets out of our way, so we don't look at another delay here. Um, get that wrapped up. That's really the only thing holding it up at this point. I did send out, should've got a copy of, a brief information about GoGov, or.
GoNotify.
It's a product of GoGov. Um, it's a really nice platform. It's far more elaborate than the One Call Now system that we previously had. The One Call Now system would just send out an email or a text or a call, whatever we selected. This, you have the ability to send out a message and it, it'll hit anything, however user wants to be notified is how it'll get sent to them. It's much more robust. There's, we can connect, like, we can put, it, we'll basically have our own app, is what it'll be. And then we can put anything, they're called applets, the buttons you push on an app. We can link those to things in the website or to, like, uh, contact us now, email, recording thing that we have on our website. We can make that just a contact us button. It'll pop up a message box forum. And then, the nice thing, we have a lot better ability to send out mass notifications that'll automatically go to our Facebook page, email blasts, this app, whatever. So, I don't know what your thoughts are. If you want me to keep looking, I don't know how many other, I'm sure there's a lot of app development companies out there, but I don't know about how specialized in the municipal world they are. I was pretty happy and impressed with this. I didn't know if it's, do we wanna try it? Do you want me to keep looking? What do you think?
Did, did the One Call Company just go out of business, or what?
No, no, they, we just can't get into our account.
And they can't provide any support?
I've never gotten a call back from the whoever account specialist that was supposed to contact me after I left, probably four messages.
Are we still paying for that?
No.
I, I, I thought this was pretty impressive. We can pretty much tailor it to whatever we want it to do. There's also the possibility of two-way communication, where people can get on the app and send stuff to us too, and say, hey, I don't have water, hey, I don't have power, hey, some, you know, so I, I think that it's, I think it sounds awesome. I think we should try it.
So, cost-wise, it's, it's thirty-nine hundred dollars a year. The One Call system, we had a little over a thousand dollars in previously, but as you might have picked up, we never got to use it and have access to it. So, I know it's a pretty substantial price increase, but it's, like I said, I think it's a lot more robust, so I think it might be worth trying out. Worst case, if we don't like it, we can look for something different after a year.
But Nate, the user selects what options they, they wanna choose to be contacted for all these things that are listed on this sheet.
Yeah, I feel kind of correct.
And you can, you can have a contract for six months, a year, well, a year, but.
Annual, they do it annual, yep. And I asked him how quickly, if we gotta go ahead to do this, how quickly this could be deployed, and then she thought like six weeks was pretty much their normal turnaround time.
Yeah, it said online that everything was quick and, you know, that they, they have, you know, training and support that's constant. You, they don't have to send somebody here to work everything out. We can just do it. It's, sounded very user-friendly.
Yep, very. Which would be nice.
Yeah.
Quite a few current Ohio partners, huh?
Yeah, there, there is. That, that was good to see too, that some people you've heard of before using them. A lot of times you get these pitches and it's towns out west or something, you have no idea if they're even existed.
Yeah. I think it'd be worthwhile.
Okay.
Some of the responses back, is there a way to limit, limit that? I mean, I guess I'd hate to have somebody respond back to something on a Friday at four-thirty, that they don't have water, and then they go.
Yeah, but we'd have to, I guess I would anticipate making it very clear that this is like a non-emergency way of contacting us, if you need immediate, you need to call in. So, I mean, dispatch, after-hours dispatch is always here to answer the phones or at the sheriff's office, and they, they call us out for, if somebody has water filling up in their basement. Yeah, I, we don't want somebody to send a.
Or just claim anytime you send something out, like a water leak or something, if you have, you know, follow up with the call or something. I just don't want somebody to be out thinking that somebody's coming and nobody knows.
Right, right. If you would like to proceed, I'd, I assume a motion wouldn't be a bad thing to have to go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion that we try this GoNotify by GoGov for, for a year, see how it goes.
Second.
Hafi.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hafstadter.
Aye.
She maker.
Aye.
And Con.
Aye.
The next thing, I had a call with the NLC, the National League of Service Service Line Warranty Program. This is, this has been around for a little while. What it is, is a, it's a completely voluntary warranty program for residents. They can select if they want to purchase a warranty to cover their service line or their lateral, their sanitary lateral. I don't know what the cost is.
I do.
Do you? I have no idea what it is. I do, I mean, they, they sent us this information. I told them I'd, I'd run it by you guys, see if it's something. All we have to do is agree to let them market it in the area, or in the, in the village. There's no, no obligation on anybody, residents or anybody to utilize it. They just need our authorization to let them market it here.
Are, are they going to be using our name for the marketing?
They would, if, if we, yeah, they, they would, they would say something like, the National League of Cities and Village of Millersburg have partnered to offer this warranty program. Cause I asked them about making it, you know, I said, you know, obviously, we don't want people calling us thinking that we're gonna come out and service this warranty. And he said, no, we've run into that a lot, so we, we have it written in a way that it's, you're, you're, you're approving of it, but you're not in charge of it or anything.
Was, was there something a couple of years ago?
There was another program that came through, yeah.
That, that did want to do it like on, on Village Letterhead or something? Wasn't it something? Okay.
Yep.
So, I put in, I put, I got on the website and I put in for where I live to see how much it would be. And they, they have all different kinds of, of services. So, for example, um, exterior water was seven ninety-five a month, maximum payout of seven thousand dollars. Sewer line, twelve ninety-eight a month, maximum ten thousand dollars. But then it had stuff like, uh, water heater repair, nine forty-nine a month, maximum eight hundred and fifty dollars. It had complete plumbing, thirty-three fifty-nine a month, maximum ten thousand dollars. And I added up, okay, so if we did exterior water, sewer, plumbing, heater, heating, cooling, um, interior electrical, all these things, it was like a hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-eight cents a month, which they do, they have you pay by the year. So, a year of that would be two thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. And a lot of these, that's more than the maximum that they would pay out. So, I don't know, it just seemed very expensive for what you get. And i- if you get on the website, it says, this is what we cover, this is what we don't cover. And a lot of things that they didn't cover, I felt were things they probably should be covering. So, the coverage just didn't seem very good for the, for the cost and for the payout, in my opinion. And you're right, we talked about that, because they want it on our letterhead, because then it, it's legitimate for them, yeah.
It's more official, I feel like we're supporting it.
Right, right.
No, I'm, I'm, doesn't bother me either way.
I say no.
I'm leaning no.
I haven't been excited about warranties or anything like that.
Yep.
I, I also wasn't a big fan of the idea that we are getting a kickback on a portion of the services provided.
Yeah, I, I asked him if we could, could not exercise that option, if that was a, an option, because all it is, is more cost to the users.
Sure.
And he said he'd have to check on that. Well, that's, we've done that with other programs before, that we had the ability to tack on a little extra charge to our aggregation.
Right.
And they, they'd send it back to the community. It's like, no, just give us the cheapest rate. We don't want the extra stuff. I thought it was a little suspect that they wouldn't even, he, he didn't say no, but he said he'd have to check if they were able to not do that.
Right.
So, I'm perfectly fine with that. All right, Deer Run Park, with all the activity up there, I've been talking with Millersburg Electric about getting power to, my initial thought was get power to the existing pavilion at the southwest end of the parking lot. Put a panel there, jump over from there to provide power and lighting for the amphitheater, and then run over to another panel at the basketball court somewhere, with the intent of power for the Veterans Memorial, and then also, at some point in the future, size it that we could power lighting for the basketball courts, the walking path, that whole skate park. Cause it's very dark in that area. Even some security lighting would be good, if not necessarily full-blown lighting for like basketball playing or the skate park, but just some, some spotlight, and not spotlights, but area lighting, security lights, just to light that corner up a little bit. So, we met up there a few times. We've talked about, this has gone back and forth a few months. We, what, what kinda triggered me on this was we've got the, the money available that we, from our not being able to pave this year. I thought, well, maybe we could get this done if we use some of that money. So, Carrie down at Millersburg Electric went back. So, to do everything I just described, all, and this is all underground, boring, it's not overhead or open cut. We'd get power and lighting in the pavilion, power and lighting at the amphitheater, power and lighting at the, well, power to the sub-panel at the basketball courts with power and lighting for the Veterans Memorial, and then future capabilities for basketball and security lighting or whatever. To do all that would be thirty-seven thousand, just under thirty-seven thousand. And that was a knock to exceed, you know, there's some unknowns with the boring and everything. So, that's worst-case scenario. I didn't know what your thoughts were. Is that something we wanna go after?
Myself, I'd like to see it happen.
It's not ideal, but, uh, I mean, this might be a way to pay for it. Get it, get it on the books and get it going.
The only question I have, how do you make it so people just can't use, like the pavilion, the electric get to it?
You can put, you can, you have a lot of options with switching. It's just like the basketball, or the, I'm sorry, the baseball lighting as well. Have to keep an eye on it. If lights are on, have to stop in and turn them off. Police departments through there, they do that already with the baseball field. I, I see a lot of people up there, the pavilion, they bring generators, they bring inverters, the amphitheaters using inverters and generators. I just, I think it's time we get some power out there. This seems to be a good way to do it, in my mind.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with Millersburg Electric.
Second. She maker.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Hafstadter.
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Aye.
It's a good idea, Nate. Thank you.
Yes, I didn't put it on there, but I just had a, when I looked back at Matt, I saw the turf up there. Is there, do you want me to see if we can get an updated quote on that as well for the seating, or? I didn't hear of any complaints about the gravel. People brought chairs or blankets and sat on that. We had previously discussed turf, though. I don't know. I, it's around twenty thousand, if I remember right.
The only thing that I heard during the one event that was there was that some of the gravel got on the steps, and then when you got on the steps.
It's a safety hazard.
Yeah, slick.
You would slide.
Well, I can get an updated quote, see if that's something we wanna look at for the next meeting. And then the last thing, just heads up. And then the last thing, just heads up, we got leap pickup scheduled to begin next Monday. 'Tis the season. Believe that's it. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, one, um, so, I don't wanna get too ahead of myself here, but got an email today from, uh, it's the ODOT LTAP program, it's local technical assistance or something like that. They do a lot of classes and trainings for highway stuff and various things in the ODOT world. But it caught my eye, CD, in-house CDL training. And we've got Mason right now that we're we're working on getting him signed up for a CDL class, and it's looking like March next year was, or February, was the quickest we could get him in. Like thirty-five hundred dollars, if I remember right, was the price on that class. But I saw this email and I read it, they're having a webinar in November, early November, that we can do the theory training in-house if we go through this course. And we can do the behind-the-wheel training with our existing staff, as long as we have existing CDL drivers. So I'm, I think it's worth a shot, if you guys are willing to try it, potentially save it.
Is that something Pat would do?
Thirty-five hundred, yeah.
Do you have Pat do that?
Whoever, Pat, Jim, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah, and all the guys have CDLs, so. I think it's worth trying to save the thirty-five hundred if we can do it in-house. And then have that going forward if, you know, people come and go, if we have the ability to train them and get them certified and able to test. They still have to test, but we can forego the two-week class somewhere. I'm gonna try it, see what happens, but that's not till November fourteenth, but.
Maybe does ODOT or LTAP part of it be for someone going to that program or taking that?
I don't know. They didn't say anything about the the behind-the-wheel stuff, no, that's all here.
Right.
The theory part of it, I'm not sure. I'm assuming I'll find out at the webinar on the fourteenth. That's all, I promise.
Oh, I had one second more. Mosquito spray, when are we gonna stop?
We're getting down to where, I haven't really set up a time, we typically just go by the weather.
Cause they had good frost last night.
Now that we've had a good frost, we could probably call it. It's usually right around the same time as leaps, the leap pickup beginning. We do have a pretty warm week this week, though. We wanna just go through the end of the week and spray tomorrow, yeah, and be done. Okay.
Uh, I see the fencing's done down at pickleball courts.
Yes.
I've heard several good comments about that. Where we staying with the finishing that project up with the lighting and the resurfacing repair?
The resurfacing is supposed to be done as part of this project as well. I'll follow up with them to see when they're gonna do that. Uh, lighting, we don't have any cost on that yet. Oh, let me check on that.
I I thought that was part of the.
I think we might have had something there. It wasn't part of ASCO.
No, but I I thought all the work down there, we had a, had a number to do it all.
We had money and it, it's been one of those years, wow. Did we have some in this year for that?
For the park?
Yeah. So I know we did the baseball field lighting. I'll have to, I'll have to double check on that one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bobby?
All right, um, so one little tidbit of good news, um, Hunting came back and said they negotiated and got us another one percent taken off our medical insurance premiums for next year, so.
Even better.
So, that went down.
So it's one percent?
One percent.
That's awesome. Wow.
Crazy. So, so that's good news. Um, and the other thing, we don't have to discuss this tonight, but at some point, um, the, in the next two meetings, uh, we need to start talking about wages, employee wages for twenty twenty-four, so that we can get appropriations ready and get all that planning done. So, we do have, Karen made a list of everybody's wages, um, if you guys would like those, I'll get those distributed. And we'll let you guys take the wheel on that.
Karen, you have anything?
No, I don't, thank you.
Okay, well, first read ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash one oh five, a title only. An ordinance consenting to ODOT maintenance and snow renewal agreement with the Village of Millersburg. Are there any questions?
Does, has the language in this changed from our previous?
I didn't, I, when Karen got this too, we've already done this, and she had talked to Kurt Judson, and they want it every couple of years, they want to renew it. I thought we were good, but it's something they wanna continue to have us pass every couple of years.
This is just to allow them to come through with their state plows and everything, since they're coming into Village of Millersburg.
Striping, state state signage, yep.
Seems like if they would want it done every couple of years, they would put a an expiration date or something on it, but.
I'd agree, yeah. That's what kinda threw me for a loop too.
Any committee reports? Old business.
I have old business. Um, in the interest of checks and balances, I would like to discuss some additions to Bob Heinz's contract, and when I looked at Robert's rules for the proper order, I need to make a motion to reconsider Bob Heinz's contract before we're allowed to talk about that. So, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the contract, so that we can discuss this.
Do we need to go into executive session on that, Kelly?
No. This is not to reconsider his contract, it's just to discuss it. That's what the motion is, to discuss it.
You're making a motion, I'll second it.
I'm making a motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay, Hafi?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Holen? Hofstetter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
And Von?
Aye.
Okay, so I have. This is Bob's contract, and I I just thought that there, in, like I said, in the interest of checks and balances, I think there needs to be a limit, let's say, you know, two thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars, and if he has twenty-five hundred dollars of billable hours for a month and needs more because he's doing more work, I think that he should come to council and get approval for that. I just think this year has been some pretty exorbitant bills. And I just think it would be good to have checks and balances. If he has a lot that he needs to do, then he can come and tell us and we can discuss it, rather than, oh, by the way, I have a twenty-eight thousand dollar bill this month.
So what if he needs to do this and there's not a meeting coming up, Kelly? I mean, he needs to do it in between meetings.
Well, I I would assume, we have two meetings, I would assume that he would know by the first meeting if he's, if he has a lot to do, that he would, you know, come to us. The I just think that there needs to be a stopgap so that we don't have an, oh, by the way, I have a twenty-eight thousand dollar bill this month, or I have a thirteen thousand dollar bill this month. I just, I just think that there, and and it's just an idea. If somebody else has a better idea, I'm just throwing out ideas of ways that we can have checks and balances, so there's not just a blank check.
Yes, a question I have is, obviously Bob is legal counsel to, you know, legal, our village council, the police department. How do you deal with emergencies that come up where the police department needs to contact Bob or maybe some legal direction? Um, I know some of those issues came up this past year, and you can't, you can't prepare for that. So how do you deal with those type of emergencies as they come up and he can't get to council or get our approval? Um, he has to deal with it as he's getting that phone call. That would be my immediate concern.
Well, Kurt, I mean, Kelly, you put a number of twenty-five hundred.
I mean, I'm just throwing something out, it doesn't have to be that.
It could be five thousand, it could be seventy-five hundred, it could be any, any amount, any amount.
It it doesn't have to be, yeah, it doesn't have to be that. I mean, you know, I was just throwing out a number. I just think that, like Jeff said, if it's seven thousand dollars, I mean, that's a lot of billable hours, that's a lot of time. I just think that we need to have checks and balances, that's, that's all that I'm saying.
Isn't it the discretion that, like, the village hall can pay, use fifty thousand dollars without our approval? So, that would have to be changed.
I'm sorry, I don't get what you're saying.
They can pay or spend fifty thousand dollars without our approval.
Mm-hmm, you think that should be changed also?
Well, I would think if you're done that to Heinz.
That's revised code.
That's a higher revised code. You can't change that, Bob, that's a higher revised code.
No, you can't? Okay.
I just, when I looked at, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It is specific to certain things. It's not absolutely everything we do, you know. It, like, I can authorize it, if there's emergency things, I can authorize higher than that if need be for utility purposes or whatever. I'd, I would, I'd have the same concern Brad, if we get, say we're in the third week of the month and he's right at the limit, whatever the limit is, if I have something or the police department has something, I hope I can call him and say, hey, what do we do here, and not have to worry about running into trouble when he turns in his bill, if it's something we initiated. And maybe that's the difference, if we initiated it versus.
Right, right. And I mean, maybe that's what we need to change, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'm just gonna suggest, if you're looking to change something, my suggestion would be to do it per hour instead of a dollar.
Oh, instead of?
Because you're gonna run into twenty-two fifty or whatever, breaking that down. I would, I would suggest, if you're gonna do something, do it fifteen hours a month or twenty hours a month. Do it on a
On an hourly basis.
Instead of a dollar a month. That's my suggestion.
That's a good idea. I just think there, there's a huge, a- and I know that Bob is our legal counsel, but just the services in there, it's pretty much literally anyone in the village at any time, and I just think that we need to have checks and balances. Like I said.
Can I ask a question or anything?
Yeah.
So my question is, how many of the people on the council have read his contract? Before it was just put in front of you today? How many of you have read the contract, Kelly has? Who else has read the contract?
Not, not this year's, but previous ones, since it is identical.
Okay, but would you buy a car, or would you sign something, would you do money without reading the contract first before you would okay it?
I would not, but it is identical to the previous contract, so.
I'd wanna make sure of that before I read it. When, when the mayor asked last, the last time, all he said was, is the rate the same? Nobody questioned whether the contract was the same.
Okay.
I guess Andrea would respond to that. I understood what the hourly rate was, and I understand what his responsibilities are to council and to the police department, and his responsibilities as village solicitor. So that's, I guess that's, that would be my response.
But there's no rating in.
Pardon me?
There's no, the way that reads. And I know that, I think he's, I think you're, he's up to seventy-six thousand dollars already this year. I'm correct. So he's on course to maybe make a hundred thousand this year.
Karen? Can we continue this discussion at the next meeting when Bob's here, so that he can identify any pitfalls, did, anything that we might decide?
It's a good idea, Tom.
Sure.
Just so you know, that contract will expire the day after our next council meeting, it's currently, just so you know. But then we'll do anything, then we're not, we're not gonna have to solicit, so I'm just, why are you not out there?
Well, we have a contract in place, if we need to modify it, we.
Um, I wrote it up to, um, the date, I know, no.
Yeah, we haven't negated the fact that we voted on, that it was voted on, we haven't negated that fact.
So we're still okay if we can renegotiate with you that night?
Right. Sounds good?
All right. The other old business. New business?
Trick or treat. Someone has posted, Millersburg is having trick or treat on the twenty-eighth. Has anybody else seen that?
I have seen the post, I don't know what neighborhood, I mean, like, normally in years past, it's always been by neighborhood.
Right, and that's.
I, I don't know where that came from.
Well, people have been asking me, and I said, we have nothing to do with it. And I mean, but it's driving me crazy, year after year. Can't we do it on the twenty-eighth? I mean, Worcester's having theirs on the twenty-eighth, you know, the whole city.
Did it, did it say something about turn your light on?
Well, I, myself, I've done it in that northwest section, and I say, put your light on, but I didn't see it, my brother was telling me.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I must not be friends who ever posted it.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet. The post that I saw did say it was a village sponsored, but like, it made that clear.
And I think it stated, turn your porch light on to you, on participation. Most of the neighborhoods, I believe, are doing it on the twenty-eighth. I know whose ours is.
I, I have some new business. Um, so, across the street from Noah Miller, Nate, at two eighty-three Sal, South Alexander Street, maybe this might be for you, Brent. There's a huge tree with lots of limbs that have been coming down when it rains, if you guys would check that out for me.
Okay.
Okay, on South Alexander. Um, also, the historical society is doing a clue at the mansion.
Actually, I'm sorry, Kelly, can I go back to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Wh- where is two eighty-eight south, I mean, is that?
Two eighty-three, it's south of Adams.
Okay.
Okay, down, it's, the tree is down there on the right, like about halfway down.
Okay, so it's not the big one at the corner of Pearl?
Right.
It, it is the big one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, is that on the, is that on your list?
Uh, that was on the list, that had been inspected and they said it could just need a trimming. Was, was what, that, that overall, the tree is healthy, they would recommend bringing it down, but could use some trimming.
Just use trimming, okay, okay.
Yeah, that one, we're aware of that one. That one is a whopper.
That's good, it is huge, it's huge.
I, I've said before, that's probably the largest tree in the village, actually.
I think so too, it's so huge, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, um, they're having clue at the mansion Friday, November seventeenth from seven to nine, and Sunday, the nineteenth from four to six. Um, the tickets are on Eventbrite, and it's really cool, so they're having, um, the historical society is having, um, people in each room with cards, so it's, it's like a live clue game, and I'm, it's, it's gonna be really cool. Everybody's gonna be dressed up, yeah, and it's, and it's set in the nineteen twenties, um, for a holiday soiree. So, I just wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Sells out fast.
Yeah, yeah, they're only doing twenty-five tickets per, per show, so I think it'll be fun.
The other new business. Visitors have any other comments? Maybe we have a motion for a German, thought that gentleman raised it.
I thought he did too. We thought you had something.
Your arm shot up. Oh, I'm sorry.
Still have a comment.
You'll agree about it, yeah.
I'm sorry, who is, who motioned? Was that you? Holen?
Aye.
Hofstetter?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Hafi? Aye. And Von?
Oh, good evening.